All right, six o'clock to call the meeting to order. First order of business is public comment. If you have any comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments to three minutes, and address your comments to the board. Anybody? Nope. All right, we're going to deviate from the agenda. This is kind of unusual, but whatever. We just had a gentleman who just served for six years on the board of Slickman, and we'd like to present a certificate of appreciation to him. Kerry, would you come up, please? So this is from the board. Thank you very much for all your service.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And if... Oh, I meant my head to back. Go back, go back, go back. Oops.
He wants your back.
The photographer, we don't pay her enough, I guess, because she wasn't ready. She wasn't ready.
We're just going to take a little picture.
Oh, okay.
Oh, there you go.
Wait a minute.
Perfect.
All right. Number three on the agenda appointments, Bill Newell. Bring it. And come up if you would, please, sir.
Outside, yeah. So if everyone has that packet in front of them, let me just go through this whole process here. We started looking at this building in 2019. We look, we've actually done work on the transfer station before. And I have been through this building two or three times. So my name is Bill Newell. I have a company out of Loudon, New Hampshire. I have 25 people that work for me. We have spray foam rigs. We have insulation equipment. But we are not an insulation company. This is all we do. We just do existing buildings, so weatherization company. And I'll briefly go over what I am and what we do. I am a licensed energy auditor for the state of New Hampshire. I'm a quality control inspector of the state of New Hampshire. And I am a proctor for the state of New Hampshire if anyone wants to get into this business. So, and I belong to REPA, which is an organization of professionals that get together and discuss building science all the time. But we can start on this page right here. I'm going to explain a little bit. This goes back to 2019. And so I think GDS came in here and did a report. I saw, right, Lou, GDS at one time?
They did a, yeah, they did a blower door test.
Yeah, they did a blower door test. So there's two things you look at when you're doing weatherization. Now, I'm going to get a lot of information here. If anyone has any questions, please ask. There's two things you do when you're looking at a building. One is air leakage. You do that with the blower door. That's what GDS did. I work with GDS all the time, and I met the guy who did this. And he will tell you the thing he didn't do is look at the thermal that's up here in the attic. So let me just explain what that means. If you have sheet rock here, in any house, you have sheet rock and you have insulation behind it. The sheet rock, air can't come through. The insulation, so that's your air sealing, and then the thermal is the insulation, right? So you want them always to be touching each other. You want them to be in conjunction with each other. Like you don't have the insulation away from the sheet rock in any house, right? So I went up into the attic. And in your attic, what you have is they ran the heat lines above the insulation. So what that is in effect like is taking ducts and going out through that wall, running them down through the outside of the building, and running them back inside. That isn't kind of sort of what you have. That is exactly what you have. The insulation, then the heat lines up above, and then it comes back down. In the fire station, what you have is about half the insulation you need. So they don't have that problem, but it doesn't have enough insulation in it. So if we start, I put the estimate upfront because everyone wants no cost, right? So what I put here is in the, in the police department, in the police department, they have these reports, the police department is the one for 62,400. That's where we are right now, the safety building. What we are proposing to do, and we do this all the time, and if you were building the building now, you would have to do it, is we're going to move that thermal and air barrier up to the bottom of the sheathing on the attic. In other words, you have the roof, and we're going to spray that to bring all the heat lines into the conditioned space. Now, those are in the building. It'll be as if we're in here versus out there. So the heat stays in the building. Because right now, and I'll show you pictures, you have open air in there and everything's just freezing. If you were doing the building now, that would be spec, you would have to do it. They would never do that like it is now, run the lines up in a cold building. And I'm going to, I will show you models. It's going to show you the savings on this. In the fire department, what we're going to do is add, right now you get about an R, maybe an R10, we're going to bring it up to code, bring it to an R50 over there. And that's 21,924. We've already worked with the Hampshire Electric Co-op, and they're going to give you a rebate on this of $29,513. So the total cost to the town is $54,810. Out of, I believe it's like an $84,000 total, they're going to put in 30. I'm Joe Leguski, New Hampshire Electric Co-op, and I did that modeling today. So let me just break that down a little bit. The safety building is 74% of the project. That's 62,400. The amount of the rebate to that is 21,389. It's right on the next page. And then looking at the modeling savings is $4,649 a year. If I take the rebate, it pays itself back in eight, in three-quarter years. The fire area is, fire station is 26% of the total, 21,924. That's going to give you $3,479 savings a year. The rebate, after the rebate, your cost on that is $14,287. The cost on the spray foam is $40,000. So I put them both together, and I don't think that's on your sheet, but the total savings on the project per year is $8,128. The payback is six years, around six years, maybe a little more. And it's a 15% return on the money if you want to put it in the bank. That's what you're getting back. This next sheet is a good sheet. That's New Hampshire Electric Co-op has approved the project. It just requires your signature. They, they are all for this. They're going to give you the rebate. Everything's all filled out and ready to go. It's even signed by Joe Leguski. You can see it right there. So depending on what you want to do, they've already committed the money. And then these next pages, you could look at, but you don't really have to. It just explains the whole process that I went through. We're going to get toward the modeling. This is, everything in here is done. I got a call from Joe Leguski this morning, and he said, if they're ready, we're ready. Are there any questions so far, what we're talking, what we're doing here? All right, now we have the pictures of what I found.
I have a question.
Sure.
On that first page you showed us, there's a cost to do the model is $1,500. So what's that?
Guess what? You don't have to pay it.
Okay.
We took care of that.
Okay.
This building is so bad, the New Hampshire Electric Co-op, and we, we paid for the modeling. It's, there's no cost to you at all. That's, so what they're, what they're saying is that usually costs $1,500 to do the modeling. Joe looked at it and said, no, let's just get this done. So I'm going to backtrack a little bit. I've been doing this for, I don't know, 18 years. And I found through one attic, and it was here. I came through because it was a little plywood pathway that wasn't all connected. So I fell into the equipment room. So I do know this building, and I was the one that was up there.
Oh, wow.
And I took these pictures. So what you're seeing here, the first page, you see how that's open soffit? The soffits are right out here. That's what that is. You're supposed to have prop vent, you're supposed to have wrapped event that takes, those are not supposed to be open like that. If you go into any house, there's, there's venting that comes above the insulation. The insulation is supposed to go out there, and it's supposed to go up and out the roof. You don't have that. This is completely open to the outside, as you can see. I'm looking at daylight there. And then the next picture shows the heating ducts above the attic insulation. So it's coming into this cold area where this, it's freezing up there. The roof deck that I'm showing is where the six-inch spray foam would go. Now let me explain that. Six-inch insulation of spray foam means that for every inch, there's seven, an R7, okay? So this will be totally insulated roof. It also air seals the roof. And it has what we call a vapor barrier. If you get over three inches, it's a vapor barrier. What does that mean? Is it, it means that essentially it's inside the building. It would be like this wall, you don't get moisture on this wall because there's so much insulation on there. It's essentially inside here. As you can see, the heating ducts, again, there's another picture of the heating ducts. I got a picture of it in the cold section of the attic. It's clearly above all the insulation. I even found, and we'll get a picture of that later, you actually have heating ducts that are completely blowing air up there. They're disconnected, and they're just blowing hot air all winter up into that attic that's not doing anything. Are there any questions at all on how this is going to work and what it means?
Yes, I have a question. So you were talking about doing spray foam to the attic ceiling.
Yes.
This is an old building that will need a new roof eventually. Is that going tonight to be done again, or is that going to stay there and then it just?
Just stays, yeah. We do this all the time. Oh, let me give you a little background, too. This isn't the first municipal building we've done. We've done the tunnel Lee, we've done Jeffrey, we've done, you know, we do this stuff all the time. I would say of all the ones I've seen, this probably is the second worst one just because of the way they put the heating lines up into the attic. Usually you don't see everything up there, but you've got all your heating lines are up, all your heating lines are out there, outside, so. So you can see again, I got cold air coming into the attic. We're going to, so see that soffits there on this page, this, this picture right here? We'll block that off. So this is important to note. We're going to make that into what's called a hot attic. What that means is it's not, you know how like most attics you have to vent? Like I explained before, you don't do that. It'd be like, you don't, you don't vent a wall, right? And the reason for that is, the reason you vent an attic is because you have some, it's above the insulation, and it kind of gets hot, and it kind of gets cold. It's not really inside the house, and it's not really outside the house. It's kind of getting a combination. So you get some warm air from inside the house that goes up and causes moisture to, you know, occur. And so you need to vent that so you don't have moisture up in the attic. Well, this will bring it inside the building. There would, there's no need to vent it because now everything is inside the building exactly like that wall is. That's a little complicated to understand, but does everyone follow me on that? Does anybody, everybody?
So where does all the heat come from? Because you're not heating, it's not like another zone, so where does the heat just?
The heat?
Where does it come from?
The heat, you mean going up?
Yeah, because you said it's.
Oh, in a normal situation?
Yeah.
Oh, an attic, right here. This isn't sheet rock.
Right.
So right here, there is nothing preventing heat from going up there. The attic hatches, any penetrations with lights, any of that stuff, the heat's going up into the attic. Which is why, when we get to the fire station, I'll explain, because we're going to bring everything up top. You know, we, that'll air seal everything. On the fire station, we will close the penetrations in the attic to stop the air sealing because we're not going to move it up. We're going to keep it at the same level. So again, there's another picture of the heat lines right out in the middle of nowhere, freezing cold. The mechanical units are up in the cold attic. They're actually just sitting up there. And then I think on the next page, I actually have a picture of the heat line I found, completely open. Putting heat into the insulator. Can you see that one? Yeah, it's right there. It's all open up. And then in the firehouse, what we found is you had seven inches of insulation. You have about an R20, something like that. But you need to add insulation to get it to an R50. And this, we're going to get to the modeling in a minute, and that proved itself out to do that.
I think you're missing a picture here, Bill. I don't see the picture of where you fell through the roof.
They can, they can tell you over there. So we do two things here. We come up, the process is an energy auditor comes out, that's me. Then we take all the data and we model it. We have to prove this. We can't, to back up for a minute, what, where this industry came from. It used to be carpenters, apprentices, or some guy came in, just like medicine years ago, with no laboratory tests to go, here, take this, we don't know why. They'd come and go change the windows. They couldn't model it and tell you why. So now what we do is we actually test in and test out, and then we have to model things and prove that we can do what we say we're going to do. So right here is the modeling that was done on the law, on the police. We're calling it police, it's the safest, where we are right now. So we can start, there's a lot of information here that we can go over, and I can explain. So you see the shaded area? That shaded area? Yeah, there you're looking at it. What that is, is if you were using the building codes that exist today, all right? And then it compares it to where you are now, all right? So like wall construction, they're saying that now you would have to have a 20, an R20, you have a 17, that's fine. They're saying that's good. You see in most, where it says the same, it means you're meeting everything, okay? Window shading, you have none. That doesn't mean there's shading on the window. This actually, when you buy a window, now you can get shading in it, but it's irrelevant. It won't change anything. Your window glazing is good. As built, it's a .29. But when we get into the interesting stuff is if you can see heat efficiency, right now you get an 80 AFUE furnace. Now, that's what you should have. You have a 75. When we actually do this, it'll bring it up to an 85 because it's going to be in conditioned space now. So efficiency increases in a conditioned attic. I mean, that thing's trying to work in an unconditioned attic. It's not going to be efficient. As far as mechanical ventilation, you're going to bring it down. So that's just CFMs that are going through the building. We're going to bring it up from an 1125 to a 500, significant drop in that. And again, a lot of this stuff is not relevant to what you do. Like where it says same, there's really no, no difference. So where you're really going to make up here is it, if you look at the energy cost per year, results police right here, that's the big one. So what it's saying is that it's built, your cost at 23, by 43 a year. After the improvement, after that, you're going to be at 18,894. And that's using, by the way, when we talk about the eight years out or the seven years out, that's taking today's cost. So you have to think that the cost would be the same. If the costs go up, it gets better for you. Does that make sense? I don't think eight years from now, the cost of fuel will be the same as it is today. Highly doubt that. So then if you come to the bottom where it says payback, does anybody see that? Payback? That payback is, Joe's using that for what he's going to, for the total cost. But that's why I put in that other page. That's not your cost. So he's saying 13 years, but that's based on 64,000. But you're paying 40,000. That's why it comes down to eight years. But he wants to know, he wanted to know if it was worth it for him to put the money in. So he, this is actually, this model is from New Hampshire Electric Co-op. They want to know if they go before their board, can they justify this? And they could do it. You can also look like this tells you, this one tells you right here, as built, as proposed with approved insulation, it shows, see how those, that came down? That's the important one right there, the heating. That's showing you what, what the change is going to be. And then it tells you what, so it's got energy use and energy cost. That's energy use and energy cost. And again, I'm going over this, and we'll go back through any questions anyone has. The fire station, most of the problems in the fire station, like I said, are because it does not have enough insulation in it. And it, it wouldn't even meet code now with what it has in it. Not that anyone would care. Insulation isn't like a safety thing. It's just, it's an energy thing. So, you know, I don't want anyone to think that anyone's going to be in trouble because of code. It just doesn't mean present day energy codes. And if you look at that, the energy cost there is 24,456, coming down to 20,977. And they are going with a $3,479 savings a year. And pays itself back in 6.3 years. But again, that is using the total cost. At your cost, it pays itself back in four years. That's kind of skimming over what I have, but if anyone has any questions, I can be happy to answer what spray foam is. I can be happy to answer what anything is.
Can I ask you a question? One of the things our building person was telling us about, those windows in the back, he think are, he says that there's a draft that comes through them. So one of the things, I don't know if your company does anything with that kind of stuff, but that's something we want to look into. So we don't know if the windows, you know, having the draft, or is it they're not sealed around the outside? Or what the issue is?
So when you, yeah, we do that stuff all the time. So when we look at a window, we look at there's glaze, if there's any fogging in it, which I don't really see.
Yeah.
But one thing, you're getting into one of the laws of thermodynamics. So if you don't have shading on that window, I could put in new windows, and you go, you know what, I still feel a draft. And the reason you would still feel the draft is warm goes to cold. So you don't have thermal shades on that, or anything like that? Warm goes to cold. Those are colder than the wall, so you get circulation, little circulation. A lot of times, that's what the draft is. There's been a lot of studies on windows, and this will surprise a lot of people. It is the least cost-effective thing you can do for energy by far. And we, we put in 1,000 windows a year, but it's the least cost-effective thing you can do. Because look at that wall. If I, if I took that wall, it's an R19 on the wall, let's say, right? Those windows are at best an R3, right? And then you have the studs in the heads. And if I moved all that over and tried to, how much of the wall am I going to get? About that much, right? I can ex- like that much of the wall effectively. So then you're going to spend thousands of dollars to bring that from an R3, maybe to an R5. Windows don't really change draft, window draft. Most of the draft is caused by the area around the window. Or like I said, if those shades are all up and you're sitting in a real cold day, and that's open, you're going to get a draft all day long. And I could re, like I said, I could replace them, and you go like, Billy, you didn't accomplish anything because you're still going to feel that draft. Did that explain it to everybody?
So you're talking about actual shades, like purchasing?
That's why they make that, is exactly what thermal shades are for.
Okay.
It is to stop, second one, thermal damage. That warm goes to cold. That's exactly what they're for. And it's a heck of a lot cheaper than replacing those.
It was suggested to us, though, that perhaps the wall around the window wasn't insulated?
Yeah. So the way you do that, we have them, and I can send one up. We use thermal cams. And if I have a delta, if I have a difference of temperature of 20 degrees between the inside and the outside, we can look at it, and I can tell you what it is for insulation there. It'll just take a picture of it, and I, we can tell. It's insulated. So it's just like taking an X-ray, and we can tell what that is. This building does not have any other sealing problem as far as where we're sitting. It has, your problems are all up there. And when we do this kind of work, we always try to get the low hanging fruit. Now, like I just said, if you didn't have insulation in there, that wall, let's say you had two bays that didn't have insulation, I would gain very little by the amount it would cost you to fill that. When I have an attic, it's a solid plane. There's no windows going through it. And we can air seal what's open. And in this case, we're just going to bring it up to the top and air seal everything. It's much more effective. Basements and attics. Why an attic? Because you have stack effect, right? Warm here, it rises. So it's looking for a place to go, and you've given it that. The way this is set up, it's, it's pouring out of there. So you have open soffit, you have the heating system up there, you have kind of everything going against, against you. Is it hard to heat this place?
A little bit.
I would think it, it could be. I would say, I, not I would say, we've looked and looked and looked. We looked at adding insulation, we looked at air sealing, we looked at everything in this building. Believe me, I know this building. And the only solution we could, everybody could come up with was this, that was effective. And I think any company that came in, you know, like a building science company would tell you the same thing. So New Hampshire Electric Co-op jumped on this, and it's willing to give you the top rebate they can give. He called me this morning. He said, is this ever going to go away, Bill? I said, give him, give him a chance. Because we had the, we had the pandemic, we had this, we had that. Everything's worked. I worked with Lou, how many years has it been, Lou?
It's been, yeah, since 2019.
Yeah, 2019. But I'm willing to answer any questions you have because I've thrown a lot at you.
One thing we have, and I don't know if you've been downstairs, but the large room that's downstairs, there's a door that goes to the outside, and you can see outside underneath the door. And I hope it rises, but.
A sweep, yeah, that's easy to put.
Something relative easy like that?
We carry that stuff with us, yeah.
All right. And also it turns, if you, there's, there's two doors, and they, they go out. But when they meet, I think there's.
Those, that's harder now. When you look at, so we chase air sealing, right? But when you do the math on this building, that little thing right there?
I know.
Is insignificant versus up there. I looked at the GDS numbers, and I did not see an air sealing problem in this building. I just didn't see it. And not only I didn't, but we had a couple engineers look at it. They didn't see it either. Everyone came up to the same conclusion. It's all thermal, thermal up there. And adding six inches of insulation will, will just move, spray foam. I want to be real clear on this. It's closed cell spray foam. You've heard of open cell and closed cell? Everybody heard of that? There's a huge difference. Up here, you're going to use closed cell. It means, actually what it says, the cell's closed, which means vapor can't get up into your roof. So we want to use closed cell, go six inches, and you have an R42, and it'll, it'll change the building, especially if we close off, not especially, we have to close off those soffits out there that are open to the outside.
And you're not going to be doing the work, right? So you're not going to be falling through or anything?
No, my crews, believe me, no, 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 no. I'm not going to, no. I've done my diligence here.
What if there was a problem with mold? Is there a guarantee on that?
I did not see any up there.
But I mean, if you're sealing it all in, and you're holding it all in there, what is the, what is the escape for the moisture?
So if we, well, there is a, great question. It's the same as if I'm here.
I know. And we just, we just redid our attic, which by the way, made a huge difference in the heat. But one thing we've installed was the little, you know, along the side, just to have the air. But, um, one thing we've installed was the little, you know, along the side, just to have the air go through, because I'm...
Right, and that, so that's what gets confusing, you don't need that anymore.
Alright.
Because we're gonna put, so again, so, the reason you have to vent an attic is because it's neither inside or outside.
Right.
So, uh, I'll give you an example. I went into a house one time, and a family had problems with allergies, I think, and they put a huge humidifier. It went right up into the attic and completely put mold up into the attic, because that warm air was going up, getting cold, and not drying out, had no way to dry out. This will never, so when you put six inches, you essentially, and I know this is a hard concept to wrap, you had, it took me years too. You essentially, inside the, that bottom of that insulation, I was inside the building.
Right.
The same as this is, so there won't be any, any moisture up there. It's essentially being just like you're sitting here.
So it'll be like a third story where...
That's exactly what it's gonna be like, yeah. It's gonna be as if everything above that attic, you could put a bed up there and, and live in it, yeah. You're gonna be inside the building at that point, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, yes, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm assuming we'll save some money on air conditioning?
Both, yeah, and it's in the model too.
Oh, okay.
Everything, yeah. We just concentrated more on the heating, because that's most the way your problems are coming, but, yeah, anything that has to do with heat or air conditioning, well, we'll save. And again, we've done, so... We do, uh, huge multis, we do, we, like I said, we do this stuff all the time. Spray foam wasn't around ten years ago, fifteen years ago, we wouldn't have a solution to this like, like we have now. There would have been really nothing concrete we could have done about it, because spray foam wasn't advanced enough. So, you know, now, it's been around enough, we know what it is, we know how it works, and, uh... You know, that's why you see spray foam companies around, I'm sure no one saw them around fifteen years ago, but right now, it's, it's, uh... It's taking over the industry, because in many ways, it's the way to go to get an effective air barrier. It's more expensive, um, but if people are gonna, and just, to go on a little tangent here, let's say you have a house where you want to put mini splits in, so, you know, it's, we, we are doing homes that that's all there is for heat, mini splits. Very expensive homes, and the only way you can do that is spray foam, because you could never get enough heat retention otherwise. So, um, spray foam, spray foam, I have two spray foam rings, and I'm probably gonna have to buy a third one. It is the only thing we do, and this is something kind of important to bring up, is the only thing that we do that we manufacture on site. So you want people who know what we're doing, which we have, like, they're all trained. You don't manufacture bats on site, you don't manufacture cellulose that you're blowing in on site. This, you're actually putting in the A side and the B side, making it and putting it in. So you want people who know what they're doing, we have those. As far as the, the, um, agreement with New Hampshire Electric Co-op, it just needs to be signed and sent, if you make a decision to do that. He's got everything filled in, and we fill in the rest, and I'm not pressuring you to go, I'm just saying, he has it ready to go. He called me up this morning, Joe Juski, who you know?
Yes, yeah, he actually came, um, four ye, four years ago, and looked at all the lights in the building, and, and got us started on the LED conversion.
Yeah, Joe, Joe definitely knows his stuff.
He knows the building also.
He, he, he won't put money into a building that's, doesn't, that won't model out, he's just not gonna do that. And this building completely modeled out for what, you know, what needs to be done. Is everyone clear on what would happen here?
How long would this take? What's the process?
I would say at least a month, maybe more.
So is there any interruption to service while you're accomplishing these things?
So, I would need to, so how much is this, who's up here during the day?
Up here as in this whole floor?
Yeah, here.
This floor?
Almost that one.
Well, there's the bunk rooms.
But during the day, they're not bunk rooms.
Okay, here, here's the thing, and I don't want to scare everybody, because it's not, we've done hospitals, this isn't, we can always work around this. No one's supposed to be here when we're spraying, so we can spray at night, we can spray when no one's around, it's not a big issue. Or if I get up there and I can see that we can seal it properly, so we're totally like away from everybody, then we don't really need to worry about it. I'd have to go look at it again, like, think about it, we, we do hospitals, we do nursing homes, you just have to, like, if I was doing this room, we sealed that up and sealed that up, and no one came in, just flip that up and make it an attic, and if we can make that happen, then, then it's fine.
Maybe it takes you a month to, to actually spray all this stuff in?
You've got a big building, you've got eight thousand square feet, and, and they gotta get around up there, and they need to block out the softets, this is a lot to do. It's a lot of work. Because remember, we're not just walking around, you're gonna walk on between ramp, between everything up in the attic, and then reach up somehow and get up there, and you need to be able to get up to the top of that attic. And that's, you know, that takes a little bit of, of work to get, to get that done.
So, you talked about this side, how about that side?
That side needs, that side needs nothing, because there's nothing, it's just cellulose, yeah.
So we, every day we wait, we're just letting where he go, so I feel like it's...
Are you trying to convince somebody that's already been decided that they want to do it?
I'm just...
Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm trying to say, can, is, are we ready to take a vote on this?
I, I'm in favor of moving forward?
I'm in favor of moving forward as well.
Rebecca, you have any thoughts?
No, and I think we already had money aside from our, that's actually more than what it looks like it's gonna be.
It was sixteen, I think.
I think this is a no-brainer. It's the right thing to do for the town, it's what it seems to be.
It's under sixty, forty-nine, five hundred and eighteen, three seventy-two, that's more than this is gonna cost since day of the rebate.
Good, so all you would have to do is get that signed, get, you can take one of the copies there and get it to Joe. You have Joe's number, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And get that done, and just let us know, and...
Yes, thank you very much. I'm very excited about that.
And so I'll probably have one, if you go for it, I'll probably have one of my guys come down and look up there to see, you know, just to really go over what needs to be done to the actual mechanical part of the process.
Is someone going to make a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, probably.
I'd like to make a motion that we go forward with the plan as presented by...
Newland.
Newland Cracker?
Um, using the funds from...
Four.
Four. Oh, sorry. For fifty-four thousand, eight hundred, ten dollars and sixty cents.
A second?
Stack it in.
Any discussion? Oh, mister, go ahead.
Which, which arper, one or two?
Oh, one.
One, I think it's in one.
No, it was listed as two.
It's both, it lists it as two?
Yes, but we found that we had extra cash, and we talked about how we could use this right away, so we could go quickly.
Does that have to be part of the motion? Can we need to... Two, okay, you're just putting in a thing.
Just, just I want you to double spend money.
I appreciate that.
Is the model, is it in one or is it in two?
Two.
In a pre, pre, most recent meeting, you listed it as arper two.
So, can it be funded out of one, or not?
Uh, right now, arper one is at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Yep, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So there's money left over from that.
Yep, money to go.
Alright, any discussion? You have another question?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, if you have any questions, my number's on here, call me anytime, I'm available all the time.
Thank you so much, thank you for doing all this, I'm sure PS and H will be happy to hear the next.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
If we vote.
Thank you.
Electric Co., and we have to have...
Oh, sorry. I'm sure Electric Co., I apologize.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes?
And you'll take care of Joe?
We have a sign.
Yeah.
Joe Juski?
You want me to call Joe?
Uh, we, tomorrow, yeah.
Okay.
Just, because you're the town, so, someone should call Joe from the town and tell him what you want to do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, and we'll work out, who are we gonna work with?
Andy.
You can work with Andy and, oh, what? I have to sign there too?
I mean, I just took a pass on him.
Okay, thank you, everybody, thank you.
Thanks so much. Did you sign it though?
But, just one.
Are you sure we just said do project completion? I guess it's highlighted.
Highlighted, I signed it.
I wasn't sure if you needed to sign it, like, it's completed.
Well, you won't pay them, you're definitely gonna do it. Alright, um, Ryan Folsen? Hey, we can't let you do slides, sorry.
That's okay.
We're, you'll have to do it from memory, so...
Thank you everyone for having us, I'm Ryan Folsen from Standard Power, um, joined by my teammate Emily Mans, and, uh, we're here to also talk about, a little bit about some energy stuff, um, a little different, though. It's always interesting to learn other parts of the energy world that we aren't directly connected to, so, um, that was nice to sit in on. We're here to talk about Community Power, which is a newer, um, energy program in New Hampshire that was originally passed back in two thousand nineteen. Uh, ended up having to go back to Concord and get voted on again, was signed by the governor, uh, in August of this past year, and we're currently still working out, out the rules with the PUC. So that's kind of the, where we're at, but a little bit about Standard Power, um, we're an energy consultant in Nashua. We've been around since two thousand ten, uh, predominantly working with schools and towns as an energy consultant and broker for electric and gas contracts. Uh, we're extremely involved in net metering in New Hampshire. We aggregate or administer the largest group net metering program with, uh, about thirty hydro facilities across the state, um, and providing reimbursements to schools and towns from that program. And Community Power was another, um, another bucket that we wanted to, um, jump into, or, I guess, that might not be the, the right phrase, but another, another avenue we wanted to explore as a company, and we've been, from the get-go, ready, very interested, we were ready to go to the PUC with the town of Peterborough back in two thousand nineteen, and that's initially when we had some, uh, issues with the PUC and the, uh, utilities saying, hey, we can't, we're not ready to, we can't go yet, uh, which kind of started that initial pause, and then reintroduction as a, as a bill this past year, so, um, Emily?
Were you just gonna say something about the, the home services here? Oh, did you say that already? Yeah.
So, so Emily has kind of been spearheading Community Power from Standard Power. We're all involved in it, but Emily's really taken it on, um, as one of her, um, main priorities. So Emily, I think, will take it from here, and please let us know if you have questions.
So, can I put that down? Okay, um, so, yes, so I'm Emily Mans, and I have worked for Standard Power for two and a half years. I started coincidentally the month that Community Power was, uh, originally passed into law. So, I didn't join Community Power for, I didn't join Standard Power for Community Power, I joined it for renewable energy, but it's been an amazing opportunity, and, um, and I have a career in the energy field, um, earlier in my career. You know, we're curious about that, then we can talk about that. Now, I believe in your packet, you had, um, slides, and so they were, did you have a chance to look at those? And so, how much time do we have today? How much time would you, you, we really enjoyed the presentation ahead, you know, ahead of us, but perhaps you're...
My bedtime is nine o'clock, so you'll get done by then.
Okay, well, there were fif, there were fifteen slides, so, um, do...
I've watched, I think, four or five presentations on YouTube and three other things, I feel really comfortable, I don't know how much you guys have delved into the depth of this.
We've had the initial presentation on our website for a while as well here at town, so...
I, I watched that, so, and I've read the, the stuff in there, so...
Okay, well, could I take about ten minutes then?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so we'll go, and I have them on my phone, I apologize, I, um...
I'm sorry we don't have them, uh, we're working on the technology.
No, there, there's really only one that I, I might pass my phone to show you, or if you follow along when you pack it, yes, that's right, yes, okay. Um, so, okay, so, um, Brian talked about Standard Power's offering, and how we have full brokerage services and also renewable energy services for our customers. We partnered, well, we met Good Energy in two thousand nineteen at a national conference that's held here in New Hampshire called Radically Rural, and we just liked what they had to say about their company, they have ten years' experience, fifty programs in Massachusetts, buying group in, in Rhode Island, they have tiny towns, they have Providence, Rhode Island, um, existing company, the sa, their savings are, you know, well past eighty million cumulative for their communities, and they have a, now, the green default is now their current standard, and I'll talk more about program default and, and so on later in the presentation. So the, um, I gave you a map of our, of our programs, I talked about Massachusetts and Rhode Island. Here in New Hampshire, we have seven program, seven communities working with us, and four of them are through the plan approval process. So, um, they're, they were listed there, and we are still, our company and the communities are still on track for two thousand twenty-two, but I think a war in Ukraine is probably gonna, you know, have problems about energy prices. And then, of course, we're completing the process at the Public Utility Commission. So, there's a path forward, but, uh, but probably those communities will fold into groups and ready for two thousand twenty-three, which is, you know, timing, you know, that, that your community could, could do quite readily. So, um, what is Community Power? From municipality purchases electricity for your residents and small businesses. Effects only the supply portion of your utility bill, transmission, distribution, emergency services, and billing will stay with the utility. So, it, um, it does provide a new default energy, electricity supply for residents and small businesses, but there's no obligation to participate, they can come and go at any time. It adds, it adds to options that they already have, it doesn't take away any electricity supply options, and there's no cost to the municipal budget, all the costs are in the program. So, um, the, the main reason it works is that it provides savings over the utility default rate. So there are many benefits to doing Community Power, but they really all flow from the savings. And the savings come from that the utility default rate is on a fixed schedule, um, and I focus mostly on the ever-source here, because that's where the opportunity is quite, you know, dramatic. Um, the, but the utility change, the rate changes every six months on a fixed schedule, and the town is not, um, beholden to do that same schedule. We can use market timing and contract length to provide stable rates, to provide a much better rate. And then individual customers now have choices, but the, um, grouping together provides, um, market power by power and consumer protections that currently, really individual customers, if anybody's ever tried to buy power on their own, you need to, you know, look at your contract, and also higher quality renewable energy, because the, some of the competitive suppliers provide renewable options, but they're federal wind racks, uh, renewable energy certificates, and we can provide local renewable energy. Um, and just a bit about renewable energy, there are, like, the power market is very complicated, but when it comes down to it, you pay cents per kilowatt hour. Renewable energy actually has, um, national established markets for renewable energy, so it's very complex. Lots of options, you can, you can build locally, but you can also purchase, um, renewable energy through a market, through renewable energy certificates, and they are locationaly identifiable, so you can, I, I use the term local to mean proximate to your location, so I don't really mean actually. And that's actually a point that, we're not talking about building out lead to provide all of your electricity services unless you wanted to, um, that it can be proximate to that, so, and then, I talked about plan choices, but I'll talk about that a little later. A plan starts with community, with what the community wants, and so we do a community survey. A plan starts with what the community wants, and so we do a community survey. We do, well, obviously, we've done hundreds of surveys at this point, but we just really look in all the nooks and crannies. We want everybody's participation. We take some demographics to make sure that we've touched all the demographic sort of, you know, points of age and income level. And then we, and we just ask some questions about what the preferences are for cost and renewable energy, really provide the key of the program. So we get about, I think our range in the four programs in New Hampshire was about eight to fifteen percent say they want the best cost that we can get, and they, and they, I don't want to say they don't care about renewable energy, but they want the best cost they want. So it's very consistently about that range. And then, and then we get a big group that say, I would like extra renewable energy if I can still pay about the same as I do today. And then that range is from anywhere from like thirty-five or forty percent to more than fifty percent to fifty-five percent. So it was a big chunk of people who would like to pay, and that's, of course, very possible. And then people who want hundred percent renewable energy, and then people who would like more renewable energy if they could pay a little bit more. So purposefully, those don't have numbers on them because of the way the utility rate moves, and, well, again, that's kind of the one I would like to show the audience about, how the range in utility rates, how they change over time is really quite dramatic.
Is that the next one? I can turn it around.
Actually, it was, it was, I'll show, I'll ask you to show these. I'm coming up to an example, so, yeah, that'll be great. So from the survey, we imply products and that we suggested default rate there, where customers that do nothing will go into the new default rate. So it's important to get that right for your community. We also always recommend a basic product where it is the best cost we can get while still meeting the state minimum. And then if the survey supports it, and so far, everyone, each survey that we've done in New Hampshire supported a hundred percent renewable product, and then we've added, we started with Keene, and really, each community since then has added an intermediate product for people who just aren't sure. At this time, going a hundred percent renewable adds maybe two or three cents to the rate, to the best rate we can get. But over time, renewable energy is coming down in price, like, this will be dramatic, this will be dynamic over time. But upon launch, an intermediate product has been making sense, and it makes no difference to us, completely community-driven. So the next slide was the example of Somerville, Massachusetts. There are no existing programs in New Hampshire, so this is a, this is a program. Do you see that one?
Yeah, turn it.
So.
There's a paper on our page or something.
Oh, it's that one, yes. So the toothy blue line is the utility default rate changing. This program has gone from 2017 until the present, so five-year program. The green line is the program default cost, so the Community Power Municipal Aggregation Program is that level, nice level, green line, and the basic program option is the orange line. So you can see that the default customers do very well relative to the, relative to the utility default, and while adding extra renewable energy. In that case, it's five to ten percent extra renewable energy, and that might, that may not sound like a lot, but it's actually really quite amazing. Upon launch, a program with ten percent extra renewable energy goes from a state minimum of about twenty percent renewable energy to thirty percent. So that's a fifty percent increase in renewable energy, and that's all viable. It's all dollars that your community invests in renewable energy that you can identify. And then, and then optional products, people can choose to do optional products and increase the, which increases their own renewable energy and also really performance of your program as a whole, which is something that kind of town can take pride in, that the program as a whole can have goals and performance, and we do, and we do reporting, of course, on those goals and performance as well. So we use a competitive retail model. The model is used in hundreds of programs around the country. The key factor here is that the supplier retains all risk. So the supplier retains all the risk. We don't take on risk, we're not experts in dealing with risk, we don't take it on, the municipality doesn't, and the customer doesn't. So basically, the, if a customer receives a postcard in the mail with some rates on it, they make a choice, they send their card in. That is the rate they get for the contract period, maybe two years. Doesn't matter what other customers do, it doesn't matter what other towns do, as long as there's a program. And we work with top national suppliers, and we are used to reviewing contracts with national suppliers, so we look for high-quality contracts. So that means that if there's supply disruption for any reason, and we're, you know, increasing weather-related events, but also just if, like, the program cost, if, let's say, the utility default rate plunged and it was underwater, customers can hop off, they can, you can decide to dissolve the program. I mean, there's, you just have a lot of flexibility built into the program, and especially working this way, the supplier retains all the risk. So the timeline would be to, you would appoint a Community Power Committee, that's required in the law, and they develop a plan. And we do like to work with communities at the beginning of the process to, it really just helps to keep the committee together, working together toward the right, you know, if people have questions, they, you know, then they just build the answers together, so. But they draft a Community Power Plan. There are required a couple of, as many here, public hearings as you would require in your town. Actually, a lot of these things are town-specific, and then it goes to town meeting. So I was thinking on the way over here, how many meetings, like, it's really, it would be great to get started, you know, this summer for next year's town meeting, and if you imagine, the commitment is about maybe, you know, ten one-hour meetings. So for, and as I said, there's no cost to town budget, but it is advantageous to have town, you know, staff participate if possible, so we can imagine that sort of time commitment as well, or less, but in any case, to supervise the committee is very helpful to the process. But honestly, I can say it's not necessary. We do have a town who really has no staff involvement.
Quick question, does this require town meeting approval?
Yes.
Okay. So the board of selectmen would not be able to opt for that without the town meeting?
Yes, so we can get, we can actually send it up to the state for state approval before town meeting. So by March next year, if the town approves it, you could go right into the sort of launch sequence, I'll call it that, where we get the data and do the serious outreach to the community and then get into that sequence. So it can happen very quickly after 2023 town meeting if you wanted to do that. So really, I'm getting close to the end of my slides, which is that we try and make Community Power simple, so, you know, and by doing the complex, the very complex tasks of power procurement and outreach to your community, and with low risk to. And I'll just say one more thing about, so our first plan was in Keene, New Hampshire, and they started a Community Power Fund. So they're not an operating program, but their fund, they had a donor from a local renewable energy developer, and their fund has like thirty or forty thousand dollars in it already. By, just by setting up an account and having some, having a plan approved, they've attracted this money from a donor. That fund, I mean, that's nice for Keene. It's nice if you have a community that has a donor who can, or that can put money into energy efficiency for low-income towns or for renewable energy. It really is a great bucket for people to donate to, and it's, but the program can also sleeve in the supplier, we can sleeve things into the supplier contract. So you could take some of those savings and sleeve in a small amount and fund a fund for your own, and then a fund like that can do things like attract other funding mechanisms, because sometimes you need a match. Or if you have a solar rate that's coming off of its, it's coming to a six-year PPA rate and is being bought out, maybe you could buy that out, and then you could own the project. There's, there are lots of kind of opportunities that a fund can provide a little bit of funding, or what sounds like a little bit of funding, and do some, you know, leverage investors. And so, yes, so that was my last slide for the, and we would love to answer your questions.
Any questions? I have one. Can you walk me through, okay, let's say we create this committee, we go in front of the town vote, and it's approved. Walk me through the next stage of that, how you interface with the community, and you said you send out a postcard and have them check off, so walk me through that process.
So this is why, one of the main reasons we partnered with Good Energy, because they've been through this process many times. So it goes, so we have to, we get the information from the utility, we go into pricing, and we, so we get rates for, well, actually, let me step back a second, because a lot of this will be done in the plan. It will say, it will develop your goals and some expectations about the, about the plan. So what we're going to do, but after it's approved, then we start to work with you more specifically on what, maybe some criteria for selection of bids, that sort of thing, of what, we start to form the bidding process, and then the outreach. So outreach can include, well, it definitely includes a postcard mailing, it includes, we work with local newspapers, we have already done a bunch of outreach, so people should already be familiar with it, but depending on your opportunities here, and I'm from over on the other side of it. So we can work with TV, we can do videos that are, we can do informational videos. Sometimes the, we just support, we do Facebook outreach, we do support for anything that you want to do, so we can do flyers, we can do, you know, photographs oriented for a Facebook post or for a flyer, or for, and we can use your photos, or we can use photos that are on the web, or really, it's a full suite of marketing and media outreach. You know, doing Providence, Rhode Island is different than doing LEED. Probably sitting at the recycling center for, you know, a couple of weeks would get a better portion of your possibly, no, no, but I mean, I come from this town, no, I'm really.
You've covered everybody.
Right, yeah, and so, but it's tailored to the town, and really, whatever you want to do, whatever level you want to do, if you want to do DVS, and we do that, and we cover all of that. We are, our fee is a single fee in, per kilowatt hour in the rate once power starts to blow.
So people can sign up, unsubscribe whenever they want to?
Right, so they receive, so ultimately, after there's a big blitz, there's, we send, we send a postcard with the rates on it, with the actual rates on it, and they have a legal thirty days to opt out or to, well, they can choose a plan anytime, but they have a legal minimum period to opt out, and then, so if they do nothing, they're enrolled in the default. If they choose a product, then they're enrolled in that, and then the program starts. If they're like, oh, I chose the wrong product, then they can call us next month and change that. But it does come, it does boil down to rates on a postcard for customers. That's really what all this effort is for.
So let's say Bill and Sally sign up, and Joe and Tina say, no, I don't want that. But then after a couple of months, Joe and Tina say, ooh, they're making some money. And they opt in again at that particular point?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you can opt in and out, like, if, I don't know why you would, but.
And there's no penalty to the resident for coming and going if they want?
Okay, alright. Because sometimes people, ah, I don't want to have anything to do with that, but then they find out, oh, well, maybe I can save some money, then they might choose their own.
There's lots of scenarios. They might be on competitive supply now, and they might have a penalty for getting off, so they might have to wait until their current contract is through. They might get more information. I mean, the outreach, I've been more focused on the survey, and we've been doing that, so I'm like refreshing myself on what happens after that point, but there really is a lot of, a lot of that can go on, that does go on, and there'll be a few programs starting by next April, May, there'll be, there'll be some more towns.
Can you tell us who normally ends up on these power committees?
Yes, so often, you know, an energy committee, or I guess you guys have an energy and a sustainability committee, so folks from, so, you know, can form wholeheartedly, or they could, you know, you can have members that apply. I guess one way we've seen it is that the town actually takes sort of applications and then chooses five or seven people, and say, you know, five is a physical number, or seven, those are great numbers for.
The town of Wilton and the town of Deerfield did put a link on their website, and it said, please, if you're interested, please apply, so.
It's nice to see you.
Wilton's one of the four that are ready to go now, and Deerfield is just starting, and they should be looking forward to 2023, so.
And I'm glad you said that, because I was just thinking, also, in Keene, they had a representative from the business community, actually, a couple of people, just, yeah, vice president of the hospital, and so they had other stakeholders, and that's, you know, it's not, it really is a process, it's not, you don't become an expert in energy topics. It really is a process.
Anybody have any questions?
My name's Chris Regan.
I had two questions. One was, what reasons would town meeting attendees have for voting it down? What are the negatives? And my other is, how, if we were a customer, how do we know, how do we keep up with whether it's a good idea, where that default lays, and whether it's a good idea to jump out or jump in?
Okay, great questions. Great questions. Okay, so there, Community Power is one of those rare programs that really has something for everyone, and it, they, they won't do better if they opt out to the utility default over the program, over the contract period, certainly not when it's launching. We would never would launch when the, when the rate is above the utility default. So really, in four New Hampshire town hearing processes now, the concern is that if it affects the utility, will the utility be mad at us? Does it affect their profits? And the answer is, it doesn't affect their profits. They profit, the supply isn't pass-through, it always has been, and they, so they make money on emergency services and transmission and distribution and billing. So they're on board writing rules now, like, they had some resistance, but now they're on board with that, and they're, so if people were mistaken about whether the utility would not like this program, we just don't see the people saying, I really don't want renewable energy anymore, and nobody says they don't want to save money. So it, really, we don't get resistance in that regard. And actually, I knew I was going to forget your second question.
Why would they opt in or out?
Why, if I, as a customer, how would I know if it's a good time to jump off or jump in?
So over the program, which, or over the contract period, which is typically two or three years, but again, it can be any period, but it'll, the program will save money, I mean, that's what we do for, that's what we do. But if, on the example we showed you, for Brookline, in one of the ten periods, six-month periods, so one six-month period over the last five years, the utility default dipped below the program default, so only in one of ten, and it was due to COVID, and then it was righted. So, I mean, you can try and, you have the right, you can, everybody can hop off and hop back on. We provide information, we'll have either, well, we'll design it with the town, but either it'll be a webpage likely, that will have basic information about the program, and then either you'll update utility rates, or you'll have a link that, our link that will update the utility rates. So you'll be able to have actively know, you'll always know what you're paying, it'll always be on your bill, utility rates are easily found on the Community Power webpage, and then, but really, probably doing nothing, like, you're going to have to time it twice, because you're going to have to hop off and then hop back on. So by the time you do that, you may, you may get, like, you know, the savings will probably be vanishing, because the savings over the program, you know, eighty million for over the region. Cause the savings over the program, you know, eighty million for, over the region, like that's accumulated, but that's a lot of customers and, you know, a lot of kilowatt hours. So, um, in general, it will be better just to pick a program and, and stay with it.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for anybody?
Andy here from Deerfield. How's it going?
We haven't, um, I am not aware of any specific offer at this point. In Deerfield, the town has participated in the, um, what you call it, Ryan, the, um.
The hydro program?
Yeah, that gets us a little bit back on the, um, town electrical billing too.
Yeah, yeah, the, the town is a traditional customer of ours in that we purchase third-party electric contracts for them. Uh, they, the town of Deerfield is also a beneficiary of our hydro program, which, uh, the, the town of Lee is also now. Um, and, uh, the committee, uh, John Harrington, the, the, um, town administrator, uh, is working to set up the first meeting with the interested, um, residents of the town. So we don't, we don't, I don't know actually when the first, when the meeting is, but.
I, I don't either, I don't. I think they're pretty much in the infancy of it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's hydro though, so it's just, alright, perfect.
But getting started before, like September is still quite an orderly, um.
That's great.
You know, time, so.
Yeah, the, the, I mean, no, we wouldn't recommend this, but the town of Wilton, um, approached us at the first week of January and said, we were interested. We're like, okay, we'll, we'll, this is, we'll start meeting. And they're like, we, do you, we assumed that they were wanting to go for twenty twenty-three. And they're like, no, no, we want twenty twenty-two. So we, we said, so we, we're open to working with each community's committee as much as they want or as little as they want. And in Wilton's, um, Wilton's case, we said, okay, but you can, we'll prepare, we'll provide you with the, the information you need, the, the, the framework. Um, whereas Keene, Keene was very hands-on and, and spent a long time developing their plan. So, and, uh, Swansea, or no, Marlborough was like, no, you do most of it. So we're, we're, we're open to, to, uh, to any, any, um, uh.
Approach. Well, and, and that, that is partly in my, um, ten-meeting calculus because they met weekly.
Oh, okay.
But they also had a town email list of six hundred people. So when they sent out their survey, their survey is, you know, we probably had the highest res, you know, result from, from Wilton because they had a week deadline and they just sent it out and told everybody to fill it out. But, but it is more orderly to do, um, so.
September into.
Yeah, if you got started by September, but, but we can, we really can.
Yeah, we can start whenever.
Yeah, so you could do it sooner than spread it out longer if you wanted to.
Yes, I mean, we can start anytime.
Great.
Yeah, but.
So if we were interested, what's the next step? Creating this committee and having them start to work with you, is that the next step?
Yes, um, and we, if you will work with us, we have a two-page MOU, memorandum of understanding. It's barely two pages really, it's long signatures, that just says you're working with us and through the plan development, so.
I love it.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And there's no, we could help you develop this plan, get the town meeting and it doesn't pass, let's say it doesn't pass, then we, we obviously take on all that risk. So there's, there's no penalty to you if you get to the end and say, yeah, we want to hold up. Then you hold up and, and, um, and we go from there, so.
Exciting. So do we have to vote to go forward or do we have to just?
Well, can, can we get the MOU? So we can review it? Maybe we can send it to Andy and then we can take a look at it?
Yeah.
Great.
If that's okay? I'm interested.
Me too.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a really interesting opportunity, but.
If you can send me that, Ryan.
Yep.
Give it to the board.
And if you can share it with Andy and then we can, maybe if he put it on the agenda for the next meeting, we can have a discussion and see if we can get some people that are interested.
Great, great, thank you so much. Alright, so.
Well, can I ask you one other question? I think you mentioned that, just, just to clarify. You, you service residential, but you also service commercial customers or not?
Um, well, for regular business, we don't do residential customer. We do commercial, industrial and municipal.
Okay.
Um, so municipal buildings.
Okay.
For, um, and which, the school districts, we have sixty-five, I think, I think Bob started saying seventy now. We grew up to seventy.
Are you referring to in the Community Power plan or just?
Yeah, just when you send out this postcard, you're just gonna send it out to people that live here. But we've got businesses, can they take advantage of it too or not?
The rule, the law says any unserved electric account. So any meter that is not already in an electric supply contract.
Okay.
So yes, that, that could, can apply to most, most businesses that are relatively good size are probably already doing something.
Yeah.
Um, but for the mom and pop shops or, or small businesses, um, it could be a, a good avenue for them to explore.
So if they're like with, um, like one of them is like Town Square Energy. If there's a small business that has them, when their contract gets up with that particular supplier, they could opt into this particular program, I assume?
Correct. Yes, and Keene will be actively working with the business community. And we also, as I said, I think I said earlier, renewable energy costs are coming down. So we don't expect renewable energy to stay a premium. Um, this will all be dynamic and so eventually if, with towns who have energy goals, renewable energy goals, it, these things will come together. Community power is a tool. It's not, you've got lots of things you can do outside community power, but it can really weave nicely in with, with your goals, so. And community power, in our plan, the residents are treated specially though. Like that, um, there's some reasons why you don't want like a, a big business necessarily mixed in. And we can, um, and the law allows us and we do recommend that in certain kinds of cases, you treat them separately. They can still be in the plan, but their pricing might be different, so. So it's principally for, um, residents and thanks for the clarification. I was thinking so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would take it, we'll send, we'll send that along, yeah, so, thank you.
Um, item number four, regular business, Andy?
Yes. One of the, um, items that I have in here is commercial use of town parks policy. And I also have some information that I received from our insurance company regarding parks and rec. Um, and being able to, uh, collect fees from their programs. I included, um, the original commercial, um, facilities policy that I drafted. Um, wasn't sure what to use for rate schedule and had left that blank. Um, towns around us are all over the place with regard to this policy. Some of them forbid any commercial use, uh, period of municipal property, particularly parks, recreation. Some of them have quite high fees, um, ranging from two hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars. Um, I know from, uh, the town I came from, uh, we increased, this was before COVID, uh, but we were charging, uh, a hundred dollars for the use of our town hall. It had quite a bit of interest from towns far afield and it was because we discovered most other towns were charging in the vicinity of four hundred dollars for, uh, the use of the hall. When people started calling from Kingston and Brentwood saying, we want to rent your town hall. Yeah. Um, but I think that is a, the sticking point for the commercial use policy is, first of all, deciding if you want any commercial use, um, of your properties. And second of all, what you might be thinking in terms of, uh, fee. And, um, there's all, there were also, I listed the, uh, properties that were listed on your just basic usage policy. I don't know if you want to include the pavilion, for example, in that. I, I don't necessarily see a commercial, an easy commercial use for that, not to say that one wouldn't come along. I think for your ball fields, the commercial use is frequently, um, although in my conversation with people in Lee, apparently it doesn't happen a lot, but in other communities, um, there are a number of club leagues that are independent, uh, that will have like a sea coast softball tournament and they will look to rent and use fields, uh, in any of the surrounding towns. Uh, and they are not necessarily not-for-profit. In fact, most of those clubs are like, uh, Sea Coast United, for example, charge a hefty membership fee, um, likely to bring a, uh, food trailer with them and, uh, sell t-shirts, um, between games. So I think that's likely who you'd see. And I'm surprised there hasn't been more interest because you have particularly Little River Park, you know, this lovely field and facility, you know. But I'm not sure what the board's contention is at this part. Um, in regard to the recreational programming, which sort of buttressed into, uh, our discussion about commercial use of the fields, um, Dave Witham at Primex was pretty adamant that if we're going to allow instructors or that sort of thing, um, under the auspices of Parks and Rec, uh, and have them collect fees or, or split fees with them or pay them, they really need to have a certificate of insurance and be an independent contractor. Um, we would ten ninety-nine them, um, as independent contractors. But he said, you know, you clearly want a certificate of insurance with the town named as an additional insured. And, and that is my experience, uh, previously was that we required, um, certificates of insurance and treated them as independent contractors. If you have a, I guess your own internal Parks and Rec commission, as a number of towns do, you can also have employees. And Dave certainly mentioned that as well. He said, you know, you can make people employees if you want, but we'll pick them up at audit and add their payroll to your general liability, uh, insurance premium, annual workers' compensation premium, and you will have the duty of doing background checks if they're going to be working with children and onboarding. So that, uh, complicated it a bit, as I thought it would. Um, I think there's been some creative, uh, arrangement, uh, maybe with regard to some other programs. I, I know, uh, there is at least one program now that I believe operates, um, on town property. They, there's apparently not a fee, there's a, an annual membership you can pay or some such thing. But, um, David, uh, was pretty firm that if you've got people collecting money for services, um, under the auspices of the Parks and Rec or recreation program, uh, they're an independent contractor and you need a certificate from them.
Can they get that from Primex or is there really we can help them if they don't have that yet?
Their, uh, Primex has a program that offers liability. I don't know, uh, if that extends to particularly things involving physical activity or things involving children. Uh, that's certainly available. Um, when I was an insurance agent, I used to provide that. I had, um, a number of aerobics instructors.
So you could point them at each other.
Back in the day that, you know, had reasonable commercial general liabilities specifically because they were doing an adult aerobics class at the school after hours or through Parks and Rec. Tai Chi and karate or other common, certain things.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question. What's the likelihood that somebody like, I think this started with yoga classes or something. How likely is it that particular structure is gonna be one to be able to get and afford an insurance policy that is gonna cover us?
Yeah, and, and I think affordable insurance is certainly available for those people, but when I say affordable, you were probably looking at three hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars a year, um, for a general liability policy that would cover moderate, um, exposure. And the exposure is rated on what you're taking in for, uh, money.
So the, the premium is noted on how much money or how risky it is that they're doing whatever they do?
It's a combination, but the rating base, uh, for the premium, there'll be a, a specific rating for it and the rating base is typically based on your gross, uh, earnings or what, what you're bringing in for that business.
Okay.
Uh, subject to, in most cases, a minimum premium. And most companies will have a three hundred and fifty or five hundred dollar minimum premium at this point.
I was thinking that yoga, a yoga person would get a cheaper premium than somebody who's doing karate.
Absolutely. Okay, absolutely. And they also ask pretty specific questions about who you're, who you're teaching. If you're teaching children, um, as opposed to senior citizens, then that sort of thing will all come into play. But it's a little more complicated. Um, the towns that I'm familiar with, those being, uh, like Northwood, Nottingham, Deerfield, have specific Parks and Rec programs that have employees. Uh, they do a little bit of contracting on the side with instructors, but they pretty much have, uh, Parks and Rec town employees that are handling these, uh, things.
Would it be possible to have the rec committee look into some of these ideas? Think about what, you know, what fees might be reasonable, what, you know, some of the, and bring that to, I'm just thinking that they're gonna have more direct contact.
I can certainly, um, I don't know, send an outline of what you're looking for to the Parks and Rec. Uh, are you calling it Parks and Rec?
I know, I know.
Sorry, Recreation Commission.
Let's see, no, it doesn't work there.
And I can also send you some, um, information about, uh, surrounding towns' programs that are about the same size as Lee. Uh, and I would also note that, um, in conversations with rec people and, um, other folks, I believe there's been a misnomer that the Recreation Fund is a revolving fund. And I think it's actually, and Mr. Tappus here, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's an expendable trust fund as opposed to a true revolving fund. And I don't know all the difference that entails, but I know if you have a, just a revolving fund that, uh, your town meeting or ballot has, has put in place, uh, that's much more eas- easily expended from, uh, than a trust fund.
Can you check into that? Cause I think there's two. One is the trustees have control over. It has like, you know, I don't remember, thirty thousand or whatever is in it maybe? But there's another fund.
That's, that's the fund that is, was created by the town.
Yep.
And you make appropriations to.
Yep, but I think there is another fund.
And that's a capital reserve fund.
Yeah, but I think there's another fund.
The other fund you're talking about has been referred, what was actually referred to in the, um, audit as a revolving fund, but it is not, the town did not vote to create a revolving fund.
So we could do that in March?
That was what my research had.
Kinda, so that would be something we could change.
Two different.
Yeah.
You already have the fund, but it is not a revolving fund.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah. So it's, it's much easier to spend out of a revolving fund for the, the week-to-week needs of your program as opposed to expendable trust funds.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, I'm being communication, uh, with Park, uh, with the Recreation Commission then. Um, moving on to the Lee housing charge, um, I put together a housing charge based on the request and Senate. I don't know, any questions, concerns, would like it updated, changed? At least fairly basic and straightforward. I think probably the most, uh, similar to this, I had, uh, spoken, uh, to some folks in Exeter, who I knew had, uh, the Housing Committee. And this was essentially the criteria that they used. Uh, some other towns had, um, much more complicated Housing Committee charges with focus on, uh, there were some national programs in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen that were aimed at making your community more diverse and welcoming. Um, and, uh, I could, I could truly add that language, uh, to this, but it was, it was a much more complex, um, complicated document. And it, it seemed that, where I could find it used, uh, were places like Nashua, Manchester Bowl. Uh, this seemed more in keeping with, uh, what you've been discussing, but.
My only issue with it is, how are we gonna find enough people that that particular charge resonates with to get them to volunteer? That, that was my only question.
We can give it a try.
Yeah. No, I'm not adverse to trying it, but it's just.
We just need three citizens, cause we have a, it's a, someone that needs to, I mean, from, I'm a person. Yeah, three.
That was fine with it.
Great.
Do you wanna make a motion to accept the charge or?
Well.
Are you making a motion?
I don't wanna accept the charge, but I'll give them the charge.
A motion to accept the town of Lee Housing Committee charge.
The second?
All in favor, right?
Who didn't know I was the second yet?
Oh, I think, I thought you were second.
I thought you seconded it, sorry.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Got it.
Yes, second.
Second.
Don't have a signature, why not? I can change.
Do you want me to?
Any discussion?
Do it.
Uh, I, I thought you should approve it.
Just have it.
No? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Great.
Okay.
We're only running halfway yet, come on.
Try to go through there. Okay, with regard to the town audit and review of the audit, and I had Denise send you, uh, the electronic version of the audit. I also had her send the overview letter. I assume the overview letter is, uh, what you're most interested in with the recommendations or, uh, what they found as, uh, not deficiencies, but, um.
Concerns?
Concerns.
Concerns.
Thoughts?
Um, and I looked, uh, this over and also looked back, uh, in more recent years and was a little concerned, uh, not necessarily because of the concerns they had, but, um, because they, they had about the same concerns in two thousand twenty. Um, in two thousand nineteen, they had none of the concerns, even though nothing was changed. And. In 2019, they had none of the concerns, even though nothing was changed and everything was conducted.
It was a different term, too.
Actually, 2019, I believe, was Plodzik and Sanderson. It was the year before that that was.
Had something changed to the rules or something, or?
Kukueh, Bashan and Kukueh.
Yep.
What'd you say?
Bashan and Kukueh.
Were before you went back to Plodzik and Sanderson.
Well, my concerns are the three dimensions further in the document. The issue in terms of the employees having access to all the functions of the payroll, that we do not have an IT disaster plan, and that we do not have a deputy treasurer. Those are my concerns right there, so.
All three.
I think you very definitely should have a deputy treasurer, and that would typically, the sitting treasurer would recommend a deputy to this board to appoint. And I think that's an excellent idea. With regard to the four positions that have access to payroll, that would be myself, Joanne, Liz Stone, and Denise right now. I think probably the easiest way to remedy that would be to make Denise and myself view-only participants, so I can go in and see if anything is wrong. And that is agreeable to Plodzik and Sanderson. I can see if anything's wrong. Denise would be able to be a second set of eyes on there, but we wouldn't have access to be able to actually change the payroll. And Denise is integral in assisting with payroll at this point, but Joanne does the majority of the work actually in Tyler.
So that wouldn't mess up the system of the current?
No, and I think it's important to have Liz there for exactly the kind of situation we're in right now, where, you know, if the finance officer is out for an extended period of time, that she can.
Have to have a backup.
But I think that would make them happy. Regarding, they also mentioned blank checks in there. The blank, my understanding is the blank checks are in a cabinet that used to be locked when it was in an open area in the town hall. That process was discontinued because the blank checks are now stored in, they're not in Joanne's office, they're not in Liz's office, they're not in my office, they're in the financial office that is locked, that Joanne and Liz have primary access to, although I have a general key for any office in the building, so I have access to that as well. I don't know, I can certainly talk to Joanne, she's back in the office on Thursday, as to what we might do. We can lock the black cabinet that is in that locked office. So I could certainly make Joanne the key holder to the metal black cabinet that holds the blank checks.
And then would there be somebody else you would have if she wasn't in there?
I think it's important to have either Lee or, either Liz or Denise have access to those checks.
I agree.
Somebody has a car accident on Tuesday, we're gonna be in trouble with the checks.
That's a little terrifying, so yeah, that'd be great.
One of the other problems, I did talk to Steve Gaggen briefly today. He said that we, we do have an IT, we don't have a disaster recovery plan. We do have a disaster plan, which is primarily a chain of command. He and I are gonna meet to review that. He said it's been at least two years since he reviewed it with Julie. I'm also gonna reach out to Brian and ask him exactly, you know, what they're looking for as far as disaster recovery plan, what would satisfy the auditors. Though, as I've said, it's sort of weird, this did not necessarily come up in previous line plans. I'm also wondering, I know we get a series of forms, those arrived before I was on site, and I'm wondering who completed them and what might have been given for answers, if they were different answers this year than they were in prior years. One of the other things I asked about, and this came as a result of talking with town treasurer Ben Jean, he pointed out that we get hit on the OPB EV liability for projections for pension and retirees every year, and wanted to know if that was an anomaly or, yeah. So I called Ryan, who oversaw our audit with Plodzik and Sanderson, and Ryan said about 75% of the towns and cities that we work with do not bother to do this. He said he did not see it as useful, but that if we wanted to be completely compliant, we could do it, and he estimated that it would cost us thousands of dollars, even if we had very few retirees because of the actuarial projections they do. So I had forwarded that to the town treasurer, and he had agreed that he was no longer concerned about it.
Interesting.
That's not one of the things I was concerned about either, because we looked into that previous years.
What about the two, the checking, having somebody off for two weeks or something?
That's part of, that's not necessarily part of the audit. That's like a business practice.
Okay.
Because the thing is, what you don't want to have happen, like happened in Summersworth, where the, Summersworth, the Halden Authority?
Halden.
The same person was doing every single thing. So if somebody wants to hide something, they're able to hide it. But if you have somebody that's out for the periods, usually two weeks, then somebody else is doing it, and supposedly they would catch stuff like that.
Okay.
Very much like banks rotate, that if you've ever had a friend that was a manager at T Bank or Citizens Bank or whatever, they have to work in a co-broke for three months and then the sale over three months.
Yeah, okay.
So at some point, I think we should consider saying, you know.
Yes.
And this has nothing to do with Joanne, nothing to do with Liz, nothing to do with anybody that's working here. That we just say, hey, the finance officer, two weeks off, and then the assistant maybe takes over for that particular period of time or something like that.
Yep. The other thing that I noticed here, under policies related to processes, there was some discussion about cash collections and standard requirements, standardized requirements. I think there's a little bit of, I'm not gonna say fuzziness, but we have cash coming in from the transfer station that comes in, you know, in a bucket with paper. We have, the police chief comes in infrequently with cash that they need, and planning and zoning certainly collects cash as well. One of the hornets nests that I've opened up was talking with the GPW director and talking with the planning and zoning office and discussing the ability to take debit and credit card payments as opposed to dealing with cash. I have that on the agenda this evening under the EV2.gov.
I tried that last year.
Offering. And they assured me that they could easily take payments for any fees we wanted, including Parks and Recreation and speeding tickets and whatever else they would be happy to add. I spoke with Joanne, as did several other department heads today, and Joanne pointed out what an incredible nightmare it had been to get debit and credit cards plugged into accounting when the town clerk's office using ClerkWorks and EV2.gov. And I had looked at their site because we already had a contract with them for taxes, for vehicle registration, and for dog registration. So I did get Joanne calm down by mid-morning, and she agreed that this might be the way of the future.
We had this conversation last year, so I'm sure she was thrilled to have it again.
And that, you know, obviously we need to discuss, but I wanted to bring it up this evening to see if the board had any interest in me trying to figure out where our options are, and also trying to figure out if there are options beyond what we're presently accustomed to. That, my understanding is that you get this listing of charges and, you know, it ranges from dog tax to people's taxes, and you have to reconcile them all.
Right.
And there is some concern about having a list of charges from the transfer station.
We can't have separate accounts, we can't have them in different, I just think that's strange.
I, I think there has to be a way to do this more easily. Joanne did concede that the process has gotten easier since it started, and they've added some accounting, primarily listings to it that help you sort things out.
It would be a lot nicer for our residents, it's really hard to have cash on hand and.
Well, it's something that's come up as a request pretty frequently now.
Many times, yeah, me too.
So what would they have? Would they have like a little iPad, if you will?
Yep.
With a little swipe, like a square D or something like that?
Yeah, EV2 has, they have a number of options. They have about a half a dozen swipe things, ranging from something as simple as if you're familiar with the square thing that you have to plug into your cell phone. They offer that. You could use the town-owned company's cell phone, whichever of our employees have. They also have, just like the town clerk uses the automatic radio button on your town website. So, you know, conceivably for planning and zoning, they'll could say, yeah, go fill out the application, and there's a button there, click it, and you can enter your payment information.
Great. Yeah, definitely looking to.
I'm, I'm going to talk with them, I'm going to talk to Joanne when she gets back and see if this is something we can proceed and approach, but I think that would help drastically relieve, and I know, like, the GPW director wants nothing to do with counting piles of small things that get handed to him on Saturday morning or.
Yeah, and there's a lot of risk there, that's a lot of temptation, so it just makes sense to make it easier.
It's just hard to count. I mean, if you don't, if you've ever counted a lot of money, which I know Mr. Boebi has some recently, but it's easy to make mistakes.
Well, then we have to count it when we bring it in, too.
Yes.
Yes, it's a lot of extra work, and actually, it might save us time, whatever the small charges or fees might be would actually come.
And I, I make it a point not to be the town office employee that meets Steve or the police chief to take the money. Whoever lays hands on it first is completely responsible for reconciling it, so.
Got it, fun, good times.
They get to find Denise.
So give Joanne a hug for us.
They get to join.
Andy, before we move on, number three, could you, all that stuff we just talked about, can you write up something of what you're going to do and so we'll have a record of that?
Do all the things, except for the one thing.
So, that'd be great.
And we are gonna talk to Ben Jean about recommending a different.
Definitely, somebody to, yeah, somebody that knows the ropes just in case something happens to him or. It's also in terms of, you know, planning for the future too. Ben's not gonna do it forever, maybe there's somebody that can be groomed.
It makes a lot of sense, because what happens if something happens to them, he says move or something, and we have nobody that even knows what they're doing.
Thing is, what, Ben went to Australia last year, so they had to plan when he signs, so if there's a deputy, they could take over when Ben goes on vacation.
Yep, I think that's great.
Yeah, so.
Moving down to town office hours, I have talked with everybody in the town office. And I think I would really like to move back to the pre-COVID town office hours. Linda is agreeable, and between Linda and I, we can work this out, so there will not be any additional overtime for the finance assistant. And unfortunately for Denise, this would also cut down on overtime for her on Monday evenings.
So what would the new hours be?
The hours would be exactly as they were before. The town clerk and the town office would be open from eight to six on Monday, eight to 4:30 on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The town office would be eight to 12:30 on Friday. Linda would like to stay open until four on Friday, and she would envision staffing the office herself or.
Would she have another place she doesn't have to work as much, because that's more than forty hours?
She is not concerned about that. And we, when we calculated the.
Liz is either not going to stay until six on Monday.
Okay.
Or they're gonna work it out where.
She's gonna leave.
She'll leave early on, you know, they're just gonna work it out so she doesn't get overtime.
So I took the model that you had used.
Before.
As near as I could tell for fifteen years or better prior to COVID.
My only concern is, Liz is there all afternoon on Friday all by herself?
No, 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 no. Liz will be there.
Oh, Liz will be there on Friday?
Liz will be there on Friday, yeah. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, it's just the two extra hours on Monday night.
Okay.
Will be worked out, either Linda will be there or they'll work it out where someone leaves early later in the morning.
That's my concern, is just make sure there's, the whole building, there's only one person there, that's.
No, and we, we actually watch that pretty closely now. I know if there's anybody in the town clerk's office after four o'clock, sometimes that stretches out. Usually it's Bill, Denise, or I, but we don't leave until the building is clear. And I think this will give us an extra hour past five o'clock.
Oh, so great.
For people that can't get there by four thirty.
I really appreciate that.
As far as the lead greeters, there's not a lot of information.
I can get you all the information, you know. So I got a whole bunch of people on an email list, and we discussed this past week what date to meet, and we're looking at finalizing the date, and.
Just hoping you were gonna.
Yeah, I took that first. Said, all right, let's go with this.
That's what Karen said.
Yeah, so, so I've been emailing, we were just waiting for one more person to get back to us, and then I think I might have the date, I will get Tuesday's again. So anyone else who wants to join, let us know. And then we're gonna have our first meeting and kind of get a rundown of some plans. We probably will have some subcommittees and get going on a plan, whatever. It's a great team, I'm really excited.
Great. I had started calling around and emailing around to see if I could find information, and I got a response from Peterborough. Who has a wonderful greeting program, went by their Economic Advisory Council or Economic Development Council. And anyone that arrives in town gets a $75 handcrafted basket that is made in Peterborough by local artisans and filled with local products.
That's what we want.
And the other one, I, I had gotten only one other response that said, yeah, we've put this together.
Well, we might start something amazing that everyone else comes and decides to do.
If it's really good.
It's leaked.
If it's really good, I'll move out to Tyler.
Exactly, exactly.
So I can get it.
Get the basket.
We would all like to, we could, we could be samples. I'd like to try the program before we send them, yep.
So what are we doing with this committee as far as membership? Are we doing, are we swearing in, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Is it, is it, are we making a full-level town charge thing? Then I guess I'll get everyone to fill out an application once we decide, we'll have a, maybe a, like a just an information meeting?
They have a charge already, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then they become volunteers in the town, so if something happens to them when they're doing their stuff, then they're covered by insurance.
They wanna fill out the application, send it to me, I'll do swearing-in documents.
Okay, as long as, and then that have to be before our first meeting? Or do they have to be approved? Or is it an informational meeting that we're?
It's a great area, I think you could have an informational, informational meeting to discuss.
I'll see if I can get everyone to do as much as possible, but maybe we can have an information, I just wanna make sure people know what we're doing and, before they commit and.
Get sworn in.
I don't, I mean, let's figure it out. There's a lot of different directions this could go in, so we'll have to see what, where the energy is.
Great. The other item I had was the town administrator review. We had discussed six months, and April 18th marks six months.
Congratulations.
I would plant that seed in your head and.
Yeah, that's, we need to plant right away. All right.
Under miscellaneous, I did get legal opinion regarding putting church events and similar events in the town newsletter. No objection to it with the caveat that if you include one church's information, you need to include anyone else who steps forward and says, we would like our church information there. And the recommendation was that it's not, it's not that risky, because if you decide you're going to put community information from churches in your community newsletter and you somehow run afoul of somebody personally or some policy, you could certainly change your mind and say, we have decided that we are not going to include any non-municipal activities in the newsletter.
So we can officially go ahead and, and anyone that wants to share the event?
If the board chooses, yeah.
Right now, I will say that the bunny breakfast was included in the eCryer. That seemed, well, it's sponsored by a church, it did not seem overtly religious.
It was open to everyone.
I was surprised that the church was having a bunny breakfast as opposed to an Easter breakfast myself, but.
Before we're thinking of the church.
Wasn't it matching the bunny egg hunt or something?
The bunny breakfast was a long, basically.
Because it wasn't a longer Easter egg hunt, it was the.
Bunny breakfast changed a long time ago. They wanted to make it more friendly and welcoming, I think, to the community.
Well, it's not really Easter, it's really children's.
Yes. It lasts about ten seconds, because if you don't show up on time, it's over before you take to rest.
It's so fun to watch, though, oh my gosh.
So I don't know what the board's pleasure is, if you want us to publish, I don't think, you don't have a large number of churches, at least that I'm aware of.
What would we get talking here, when you say?
Community events in the eCryer and potentially on.
And maybe we should be aware that anybody that's taking up, you know, pages, it becomes hard for other communities, so maybe there should be some sort of a.
I think this would be just, you know, primarily a posting of events if they want to give us their events, and obviously we reserve the right to edit if they give us a year's worth of events.
Not services, no, just.
Not right now.
The community events.
Community events. So if they say we're having. Community events. So if they say we're having the Easter service, come and praise God, no, we're not doing that. But if they're having a bunny, what is it? Bunny breakfast? Yeah. Or if they're having a talk, we're having somebody from such and such give a talk at the church, blah, 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 that's fine too.
Well, as Sherry mentioned, I think one of the things that caught my attention was Sherry mentioned that they sponsor Alcoholics Anonymous meetings at the church.
Maybe really nice to be.
I think that was one of the community service that we.
I agree.
That's fine.
And the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and all the, you know, the things they're offering to the public, it's great. They can let people know.
So can we say, let's try it for a period of time?
Sure.
And then it's less to review it. And if it went okay, then let's continue. If not, yeah, we make some changes.
And we do it just as we go.
Yeah, I think Denise and I will clearly come to the board if we get anything that appears, doesn't have the lift, tends to be a little squirrely or.
Perfect.
What have you?
The more people that want to read the eCryer because they have an invested interest, I think that's really great.
The one other thing, I know a board member or two had asked questions about working on documents and as you were editing.
Yes.
Email documents and could the board email a document around and work on it? And the answer I got was yes. The important thing is that you not change the purpose of what you're working on. If you decided a meeting that you're going to, you know, draft a mission for the whatever committee, you need to stick to the topic and not add or take away charges or duties or that sort of thing, but that you could certainly pass electric documents around and work on them collectively.
So like a review, we could work on it as, as long as we didn't change it from a review to a, you know.
As long as you didn't change the general purpose of it and.
Perfect. Okay. That's good to know.
And it was pointed out that a large number of boards do this. It was also pointed out that a large number of boards get completely off track.
Yeah, so that's the key.
And all kinds of things. So that was a question that they gave me was make sure you stay on topic.
We're pretty good.
And I'm sure I'm forgetting something that I meant to say, but.
That's okay. We're here all night, I guess.
No, we're not here all night.
That's bedtime.
All right.
Y'all done? Is that?
Yes.
All right, under section four B, I would like us to pull out the first three. I would like to have a conversation with the board about those.
Okay.
So I move to accept a consent, a consent agenda is presented except for items one, two, and three. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Do we want to sign or do we want to discuss first?
I could pull it over.
I'm happy to discuss and then we can sign easier.
All right. With one, two, and three, one of the things that's bothered me for many years, I don't know, I don't think this is the first time I've said it, but the way these particular appointments go, I won't want them to be advertised in the eCryer or someplace for a period of time. These particular specialty number one and two, they don't ever get advertised. So how does somebody from the public get on those particular groups?
I love that way of thinking. That's brilliant.
So I would like us to postpone these.
Yeah.
For a period of time that they are put in the eCryer. And I'm not saying that nobody will sign up and will get these same people. I don't have any problem with that.
But we're allowing the public option.
You need to take their response or two.
Yes.
Oh, two spots.
So for instance, like the planning board, there's one, two, three, four. I would like in the eCryer to say there are four positions available on the planning board. If anybody's interested, fill out an application submitted by date, whatever that is. And as the board will consider all those particular ones, not just those particular four.
Okay, great.
The same thing with the ZBA. There's four positions there, same thing. Something in the eCryer says there's four positions available in the ZBA. These are the terms, whatever, maybe a little thing about what they do and see if anybody's interested. I do not like the fact that we keep going with the same people and bless their hearts, these people do a lot of work for us.
They're all wonderful. But to open up the options.
But I think it's, it's, as one of our board members says, inclusivity. I think that's a word.
It is. I'm very proud of you. This is great.
What do you want for a time period? Do you think of the?
I think maybe a month. The only concern I have is when do their appointments terminate?
That's a problem. Can we give them extension?
They keep, don't they actually, they expire in the end of March, but don't they keep going unless, until someone takes their place?
My understanding is they continue in office, yes, until.
I agree.
I know because I have tried to resign from a state committee multiple times and they keep sending my resignation letter back to me saying that until I am replaced, I'm still on the.
I see. All right. So if we give you that, that'd be great. Ann, you have a question?
Yeah, quick question. So if any of these people are interested, I mean, are they supposed to apply?
They already have.
They already have. Okay.
We have appointment forms that, excuse me?
Not all of them are applied.
I did not get the applications for these people. I was just, but they wanted to be renewed.
And what does that mean that we're doing it differently?
So please contact them and say we're expecting applications if you wish to continue. And also you can make them aware that we're putting things in the eCryer for those particular positions.
I can surely do that.
Do that.
And just, just to let you know, it's, and I think it's a practice, not the law, but they have been kind of adamant in the past years that we appoint people that we choose and we give them their names. You and you just signed the forms. I do not like that. I looked up the RSA. This board appoints them. They do not appoint themselves, appoint themselves.
Great.
So I would like to stop that practice and I would like this board to get all the applications and get everybody an opportunity if they'd like to serve, get an opportunity to serve.
That's excellent.
And while we're advertising, should we also advertise for the housing charge? Add that to it?
Yes.
Absolutely, yeah.
List of advertisements?
So the eCryer will be.
I forgot, pardon me.
Well, in addition, I just sent out a bunch of emails today to everybody that's, everybody else that needs to renew.
Okay.
So should I also add that to the advertisement because there's a.
I think, I think the thing I'm trying to get across is, is when we have openings on these committees and commissions, the public needs an opportunity to have a chance to get, you know, considered for those particular positions.
That's excellent.
So if we add anything that falls into that category, yes.
And I used, I usually, I did have an ad in the eCryer, but I switched it up. I put in the IT committee and so I did take out some of the committees.
Yeah, we just put it up. Yeah, well, that way people know that those are available, they're open, and we're excited about having new people.
And maybe, I don't, I'm not sure if you can do this or not, but I don't know if it's possible to put in like a little blurb about what they do. Some people might not be aware. And also somebody they can contact, maybe it's you. I don't know. So.
Questions?
I've got questions.
Or the chairperson of the committee.
The chair, yeah.
Well, the chairperson gets a question.
Or that's true. So maybe somebody from, from the town office.
It's easier to just contact me and I can give them the application and then.
Especially if they are thinking about two different ones. I can ask you. That's great.
Yep.
Perfect. Take the blurs in.
Yep.
Can we also advertise these things like on our Facebook?
Yes.
Yes, I can show.
And to neighborly.
All of these things that are important that we're bringing up, I definitely think we should be finding space on the town page to keep them around.
We need to try to engage more people in those particular activities and it's hard. I know for some people it's hard because they've got kids and they've got to go to this and that and they have no extra time, but I think some of these might fit into different people's little niches.
Absolutely.
This is what I'm interested in, but no one ever says, you know, oh, there's an opening on the planning board.
And the, the only way that we can make really great decisions is we have hear all the voices. So new voices, different voices, I think that's really, that's fine. It's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if you can put these particular things on, what, two meetings from now, maybe? That's about a month, so.
Yeah.
And do we have things designed?
I have the rest of the consent agenda with those removed.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if you have all this, but I think normally because that's.
Here, I'll just start with the.
So I think that's an actual.
Do we need a designated comment?
Yeah.
I don't think, I think we just.
If you never gave those to your.
We're just going to get out. We're just going to.
Yeah.
End the town.
But you can have.
So are you signing this one?
Look at you.
And this one. I'm pretty sure I went to the town hall.
What were you guys doing? I go to the town hall, but I don't sign anything. I go and I do the.
She's texting us on the, on site.
Oh, that time. Did I sign that too?
I'm sure.
You've just may gotten one ahead of time.
Yeah. You got it ahead of time. I go and actually, I look over the entire manifest, but I don't sign anything. Is there anything to sign yet? No.
Rebecca, do you do that? Do you go and check the manifest at some point?
No, I do it.
Well.
She can do it too.
Yeah.
I know I didn't.
All the, all the payments and stuff, maybe, you know, I don't do it every single time, but all the detail is backed up for all this stuff.
Okay.
At some point, if you get a chance, just go and review it. It's kind of educational.
It's available anytime on Friday or Monday before this lunch we're meeting.
We also have to make, we also have to make.
There's lots of things to do.
Not on the board as well if they show up.
Of course, yes, absolutely.
Oh, have we got her as a signatory yet?
That I am not sure if she is.
Have you been to the bank to sign forms?
No.
I'd say she's not yet.
I'm not either. I'm not. I've never been to the bank to sign forms.
Joanne, Joanne is back on Thursday, Thursday morning, so I will discuss this and make arrangements.
Sounds interesting. Tell me more.
Well, we definitely need to get Rebecca. We might have to get Trin too, because right at the moment, I'm the only valid signatory. But if I get hit by a large truck, you guys are like.
Or what if you're vacationing?
Oh, everybody is dying.
Vacationing.
I know. Does everyone have to be dead? Can they just like be promoting?
My boss would not let me off work.
What am I, awesome?
We were dead.
No, if I'm dead, I still have to come in.
Should I give you the top half of this because it's taking a while?
Sure.
Okay.
For it rolls a scary.
It's a lot. I know. I feel kind of creeped out a little bit.
Sorry.
I don't like it. It's the fourth, right? That's my phone's.
Where, which one are we going?
Uh, which I said?
You want the first one?
You can do it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I do.
I forgot one.
Hmm.
Oh. Oh, you missed that. Oh, thank you. That was fun.
Nope, that's good.
We're getting there. I got one more.
Can I make a request?
Yes.
Do you want to, you two? I have the four new banners that Stephen needs to put up. I was hoping to see him yesterday, but he went to South Skank, Little Weasel. So he wasn't out to breakfast. So if you could like give those to him, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This just has one, we have town lead for the SBC, so that could be the start.
Yep.
Can all these be seen? And so, look at that. Look at that with the vice chair and everything. You guys are really honored over there. You could have a really short signature line for this particular group of three. Like, I don't think, has it ever been that many people that sign in such a small area?
Yes, we have come back.
We really, I mean, we really could save like trees on this, with the confidence of our.
Thank you.
I would make sure, you tell Steve I caught him a little weasel in the meeting.
No.
For not showing up. He should see, his family all showed up.
Is it that show tonight or at breakfast?
No, at breakfast, at breakfast. So all, his whole family shows up. I talked to his mother-in-law and she says, yeah, Steve's not coming. He's going to a basketball game.
Are we doing like Steve Rattan?
Yeah.
Who literally lives here?
Yep, yep, yep. So I think it was a hard time.
You didn't want to go to one basketball game?
He took his daughter to a golf game.
Do you really? That's so sweet. Wasn't it the Bulls against the Celtics?
I believe it was.
I'm pretty impressed. That's a great game, isn't it too?
He was pretty close to the floor.
Was he really? Those girls, so lucky. I was a big Bulls fan back when the Bulls were really good. Like Pippen, Rodman.
Scottie Pippen.
As good as the Celtics, but like really good.
I, I did live. I did live in Ohio at the time, so I was.
That was Ohio, okay.
Technically closer. No, no, in Chicago. Bulls. I was closer.
You're closer.
My family's from Chicago.
I mean, what sport we were.
I, yes.
And I thought that is a success.
I never cared before, but it was a good time.
What happened? They get separated?
Sorry.
Don't we have to sign this? This is like nothing.
Well, we can sign everything.
No, this one's.
We're attaching to another one, isn't it?
No, it's needed. This one was. They both need to be signed, it looks like.
But there's nothing, this is part of this.
Oh, but no, I just double sided.
It probably got separated.
That one has to be, that one happens to be two-sided, but that one just happens to be one-sided. So it was, it got lost. So just sign both because it looks like it got separated from its mothership.
We were, yeah, we were separated.
But that's just one side. This, this form is two-sided.
I know, but that got separated from its mothership. So just sign both where it says, sign both where it says to sign.
Do you think that we thought that the one, it wasn't double-sided and so we have a second?
Oh, wait.
I think that's it. Because it's the same thing, right?
It could be, just sign both. I'll figure it out.
We could be authorizing our unknown tax.
Yeah.
What are you going to attach this to?
I don't know.
You can, you can. His name on it.
This is a mystery.
It's probably, you're right. It's probably a belief.
I think, yes.
Have we done her review yet this year?
Snap, one thing. The whole year, one thing goes a little out, right? Right?
One sided, you'd be locked up, right?
This night has really been rough on you.
We're getting Andy ready for his review that, you know, we're tough.
Yeah, right? They're tough. They're brutal.
Oh, I see what you did.
Did I put it through? I kept the.
And then this next one is single-sided and it's a double-sided form. So I see what you kind of tried to do, but.
I think I made a copy to put it through the scanner.
I think so.
I usually throw them away after, but I guess.
And we'll have to have a conversation with you about the sign here. It's decompliment replacement. Right where I have the.
The extra one?
So that goes.
Yeah, I'll put it there.
Oh, oops. I didn't want you to mess up the extra one.
Yep, that's what you did.
Yeah.
It's on there. It's on the way.[1647.12]
Made this fourth day of April?
One more month that'll be made before that's like our super favorite. One hiding.
These are really cool.
Mine?
They're really cool. They're super cool.
Did you see that joke about who's your favorite empire? And then she replies, the Count, and I was like, I don't know. I don't think he counts because I certainly, certainly don't. I think I screwed that up so much.
No, I know the joke you're meaning and I love that you even know the joke, so that's great. Yep. I have a lot of engineers in my house, so these things are fun. Cute, alright. They're the same, same, same breed.
Alright, and number five, select board goals.
Nothing.
This was one of them tonight, working on our energy. Focus, saving money, thinking about the future.
And my goal was the town center, moving that whole thing along. And I think the things that we've picked are big apples or big nuts, whatever kind of fruit or vegetable you want to talk about.
We still need the tree.
Yeah, well, so, I think that's big enough in terms of the number of goals. I don't think it's quantity, I think it's quality, so I think, let's see, we'll have something else.
My only main concern is about the communication, which I think that the IT group is going to maybe hopefully help with the website. But I think we could be using social media better to get more information out and meet different demographic people.
I agree a hundred percent.
Yep. So, right now we have a Facebook page, right? Departments have Facebook pages, the library has a Facebook page.
I think that like our town Facebook page can set to automatically share anything from the departments. So that you could do without doing any work. Um, I personally think that if we were to write, almost like clickbait headlines from the eCrier. Clickbait's not the right word because that sounds horrible, but you know, like of one sentence, and then click here to read the rest of the article in the eCrier.
Yeah.
We might get more people to do that. I would really love for our Facebook page to be the place people go have a question instead of going to neighborly.
I agree.
And getting.
When it's a question that we can answer, not a, not a political divided whatever, but it's like a, is this transfer station open or things?
It's kind of what Linda Thompson, is it Linda? No, Laura Thompson does in neighborly. Because she takes stuff from, you know, meetings and stuff and she posts it on neighborly. So you want us to kind of be like that.
I, I would love for us to have a little bit more on our town site to make it a little bit more official. Get more people following that than possibly going to neighborly and possibly getting information that's not a hundred percent accurate.
Alright, is that something we can get the IT people to help?
Um, well, it's certainly something I can do. I can also reach out to the IT people. One of the questions I have for the board is, do you want me to, when I post something on the Town of Lee site, I immediately am asked if I want to share this with the neighborly and two or three other organizations. I know there's been some discrepancy about whether we want to do that or...
I, I just, I, I'm a little nervous because I have had some complaints from residents about neighborly and it does have its own place. It's a really important piece of the community. But I do think that when it's town things, I think it's important to get people to participate on our pages and for us to have control of that information. So if she would like to refocus that, that's great, but I think that we should definitely not be just automatically doing that because that changes that. And, and not, everyone's allowed on that page, so we're, you know, it's hard.
I, I had thought, I haven't been sharing any of the other.
I think that's the right thing. That way you can find the information and people get used to looking for it.
One thing I'd like the IT committee to do, is, one thing I've always asked for is in terms of statistics from our website. We have no, I, I personally do not have any idea in terms of what is most popular on that site. You know, we put a lot of work into putting information out there, but you know, if nobody's looking at it, we're wasting our time. We need to think about what we can do, so...
Yeah, and I'm not intimately familiar with the statistics part of Civic Plus, but I know that it's there and that should be something that Denise and I can get into fairly easily. I can certainly add the Facebook page, we certainly can.
The only, the, like how many times the eCrier is, you know, accessed or...
So you can see how many people are actually clicking on it?
I can see, we should be able to.
Well, how about, how about if we do this? How about if you guys take a look at that and bring us back to maybe the next meeting, the meeting afterwards, what you can show us in terms of statistics?
And we should be able to usually generate a report on who's looking at the website and familiarity with similar websites. It would actually be amazing what you could see. You could see the last website they looked at, where they came to your site, which you don't necessarily want to see.
Well, that's what it is.
I don't think I want to know that.
I mean, yeah, I don't know, there's, there's some things I really dislike about our town website.
I agree.
I can make you a list.
I was just pulling up Barrington, I think it's Barrington that has like a running, what's on their Facebook page? So the new information you get out or, or their questions, but there's other, other places that have kind of information right away, so you pull it up and you can see important stuff and it, and a picture kind of.
The other thing you might want to check in, in terms of, I, I know the site that we have is kind of modular. You can snap into different modules and stuff. I wonder if there's different other modules that we could snap into.
There are, I think Civic Plus is, is a little bit limited. They were one of the original.
Yeah.
And going in the most popular for, I think they probably still are. But we can certainly see what's there for other modules, and I could also take a look around, you know, what other design options there are.
I just, I would love to really click on the fact that like there's an upcoming meeting for slideboard and then you click on it and it says where, but like the agenda's not right there. You have to go to a whole different thing to find the agenda. You know what I mean? Just, I feel like that just, when I click on it and have all the information.
Strata Regional Planning, they just completely revamped their webpage and it's so user-friendly where, where there's like three different ways to get to the same information, which is awesome because however you do it, you can get there quick. Which is, that is a great.
All of this would cost money.
Yes.
To change.
Right, so.
That in mind.
Okay.
Yep.
So, who has control over our website?
We do.
Okay. So when you say money, do you mean like your time hours?
No, 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 I mean if we wanted to change what you, a lot of things that you're saying. Module, the way it look, you know, would cost money as far as getting a different program, getting a different, the way it's, I don't even know.
We have control over the existing webpage, but Denise and I both have logins and...
So, but you're, but you're saying that there is, aren't there different ways you can like set it up or no?
There are not, there are not a number of design options or much in the way of module.
The other thing we want to check out, you've got one member of that IT committee, that this is what he does for a living. So use his expertise when they get up and run. I'm not sure if they had a meeting yet or if they've started, but use him. That's, that's what he does. So he does that for a living and he does it with companies, he does it with individuals and stuff like that, so maybe he's aware of some particular product out there that, you know, we might not be aware of. Because there's a big difference between, I, I know this is not disparaging Denise, but Denise is not a web programmer. You're not expecting to be a web programmer.
It's pretty awesome for someone who's not a web programmer, you give you credit on that one.
So, you know, there might be something else out there that, you know, that she could do in terms of better. Or maybe we look to see if there's another service out there that, you know, we can make a little bit more customized. And I know customized means more money, so...
Yep.
But the other thing is, in terms of what Rebecca's getting to, is in terms of how we communicate with people. We do a terrible job communicating with the residents. I'm sorry to say we do. And that's why people go to neighborly, because they can get information, they can have a conversation with somebody. And also if Laura Thompson is taking what we're putting out there and putting it to that particular forum and that that's where everybody's getting their news, we're missing something.
Yes, and I think it's a common, I know in Deerfield, I run my own webpage called Deerfieldian Reason because nobody paid much attention to the town page and I wanted to be able to manipulate the audience.
And then you've got people like Todd Selig that sends out that thing every Friday, bless his heart, but geez, that's an awful lot of work.
But it's incredibly helpful in the community, but that's what legal requires, yeah.
But that's, that's something that they've said, okay, this is important to us, this is what we're going to have the TA do and, you know, he does it. And he does it, I assume he has somebody that helps him, but...
He has a, a large team that helps him.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't think he sits at home typing that thing out, you know, for it goes out every Friday, but you know, they've made a commitment to get that information out to people and it's kind, some of those things, I subscribe to it. And, you know, I, I like some of the stuff, some of the stuff I just kind of like, I'm not interested in that, but I can get zip passed in, get to something, you know, that I'm interested in, so...
Nope, we can certainly look at what's, what's available to do with the Civic Plus platform we have. I think we're going to find that we're fairly limited with that platform. We may be able to make better links to documentation, you know, on date postings, that type of thing, but...
Well, the other thing that irritates me, maybe it irritates you, is... Is that, and I know the library is a separate entity, but most towns, all their stuff's on one place. And for us, if you want to get the library, you can go to our site and I'll link to them, but they have their own thing. Fire department has their own page, police department has their own page. So it's like, we've kind of like farmed, farmed out different sections to different places. And if the town had one place that they go that allows different departments to customize their section, that might be advantageous for us. But the thing I find irritating, because I can never remember the libraries or else, so I go to our website, click on the link to go to the library, click on the link to go wherever, you know. And I do have it bookmarked someplace, but I can never find it on our thing.
I do, I always give the page a money.
Yeah, so, you know, and if I'm doing that...
Yeah, everybody else is too.
And I'm in IT, so other people, I don't know what they do, but... And I think the thing we talked about earlier in terms of allowing people, people do not have cash these days, they have credit cards. So if we make them go to the transfer station, drop off their couch, give me cash, what's that? Oh, it's that green stuff. Yeah, I used to use that, but here's plastic. No, I don't take plastic. That's a bad conversation, so...
I agree.
Great.
Anything else? New business? James Farm Road, Decatur Drive?
Yes, and I know there was discussion about putting these in the consent agenda. I didn't put them in the consent agenda because I didn't have anything for the board to sign. That said, the Decatur Drive survey has been completed. Don't really want to discuss that in detail at this time, but that's done. The James Farm Road just needs the board's agreement to move forward. Joneson Beach are willing to honor the original quote that they gave you in October, which...
That's the twenty-six or what is it, twenty-something?
It is twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And if the board is in agreement that you want to move forward, I believe the Department of Public Works Director can sign that. The documentation is the sole signature and move it forward.
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
And that will, and basically what they're looking for is the right-of-way, the iron pins are, are missing here and...
That'd be for the future as well, I want that.
Right, yeah. Alright, so the board is in agreement to a whole board?
Yep.
That's all I have of it?
Great. Did we need to, I think we talked about that coming from the ARPA money to get the...
Yep, yes, ARPA one, right, Mr. John?
ARPA one, yes.
Do me, I have, I have it.
Do you got it?
So wait.
Already closed it, sorry.
No, it's okay. Should we do a motion if that's coming from our money? I haven't, oh, I didn't make it to ARPA.
If you make a clear, if you make a clear motion, it would probably be fair.
What's the dollar amount?
It's twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Did we already say that Decatur Drive was coming from ARPA two? I know you said it was done, but did we make the motion for that to come from ARPA?
Yeah, because we couldn't before.
Well, we could make one, yeah.
Yeah, because it was a workshop.
Let's do that, let's just do that too.
So, so Joneson Beach for twenty thousand seven twenty-five?
Yeah, I...
What's the other one, Decatur for?
The Decatur one has already been completed and I did not bring the dollar amount with me.
I have a sixty-six fifty.
Sixty-six fifty?
In the financial planning tool.
That, that sounds very close.
Do you want to make it for seven thousand, so whatever amount it is?
Well, it's already done, so...
I know, that's what I'm saying, because it's already paid, so we don't, if you don't have the exact amount.
And who's it to? The Decatur Drive one?
Uh, I believe it was also Joneson Beach.
Joneson Beach again? Alright. Alright, I moved to spend twenty, excuse me, seven thousand dollars for Joneson Beach to do the Decatur Drive, what was it? Decatur Drive?
Survey.
Survey. And it's come from ARPA one funds?
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I vote aye.
That's me thinking. Well, if we had, if, we had one twenty-eight and then we talked about the insulation coming from ARPA one, which is sixty, fifty-four, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
You've kept it up.
I don't have the full current number.
I don't think you've got enough money for it to come from ARPA one.
One fifty, it's, we have two, two forty something.
Two thirty-two.
Oh, okay, I don't know why that was, okay, then, then we're fine. Sorry, let me turn that over.
Your total.
An aye then, apologies.
She's aying the seventh then.
Okay, yeah, your total is two thirty-two, two twenty-nine, fifty-seven, and I've got the old numbers before we've reallocated.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Motion passes. I moved to spend twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars with Joneson Beach to do the James Farm.
Survey?
Right-of-way survey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you have to say?
Oh, ooh, ooh, yes, from ARPA one funds. Is that a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment. Who are you from?
Any discussion? Now, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. I voted aye too.
I voted aye too.
Anything else in new business? No?
About to have a war.
Alright, other, other business. Geez, we've got so many businesses, jeez. I moved to enter a non-public session, New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three, sections A, C, and L. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Roll call vote, Katrina Casper?
Yes.
Rebecca Hothover?
Yes.
Not public, yes, motion passes. It's not going to change like completely with the insulation upstairs, you know, right?
On my house, you put insulation, we had to give a huge...
Wars will not stop, pestilence will not, you know, all that stuff's still going to happen.
I motion to seal the minutes from last Monday, which was the, oh gosh, what was the date last Monday?
Twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth. Twenty-eighth.
Monday twenty-eighth.
Just, just the twenty-eighth?
And.
Oh, can I do both at the same time? And from state, the fourth.
The fourth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
And it's our ceilings.
Oh, wait a minute, no, I have a question. No, no, I have a job for Andy.
Yep. Everyone, you're like eight-hundred.
This is money, this is, we're going to get money, so be nice.
Oh.
I was at the energies, New Hampshire MHA conference last Friday. One of the things they told us, the House just passed a bill, the Senate has passed it the last two years, so most likely it's going to pass, and the governor has said, if you two pass it, I will sign it. The state is going to be funding seven point five percent
Right.
of the teachers in group one, nobody else in group one, but the police and the fire. So if our town administrator would be so kind to figure out how much that is going to be in terms of our savings, that would be great.
Yep, that's exciting.
That bulletin is, I don't know if you all get the NHMA bulletins towards the end of the week, but if you don't, you will fairly soon Rebecca, because I gave them your email.
Yep.
And there's an explanation of exactly what Mr. Bubbe's talking about.
Hasn't passed yet though, but it'll be good.
Hasn't passed yet, but the, the House was the problem and they passed it.
Okay.
So the Senate most likely will pass it. The governor has said that if you two pass it, I'll sign it. The other thing is they have lots of extra money, over two hundred million. So the legislature is looking to utilize some of that for one-time things. One of the things they're looking at is education funding. So for towns that are poor, like us, there's going to be probably...
We're considered poor, maybe.
Yeah, for them, yes, we are, for education, yes. So, in those particular, there's going to be like one-time grants to us. They're coming to the town, not to the school, so this town will determine where they go.
Nice.
But there's no amounts in terms of what they're going to do. But they're looking at that. Most likely, the highway block grant is going to be double what we usually get.
Okay.
And the rooms and meal tax, they said it's going to be an increase, but they don't know how much.
Okay.
So this is from the people that lobby for us, so we're going to get some, but it's going to be one-time. So we can't say like, oh wow, let's go spend everything.
We've been dealing with lots of one-time funding and making good choices.
The rooms and meal tax actually this year was, it was some great news as well, it was the highest it's ever been. We were over three hundred and thirty-six thousand, which is about a hundred thousand over what we had previously received.
But that goes into the unassigned fund balance, is that correct?
Well, yeah, revenue, but...
Yep.
Oh, I had something else I wanted to add before we did that.
Is that money?
Money really. So, can I just ask, so will you ask John to come to our meeting so I give a certificate? Or do you, how, how do you guys want to do that?
I can ask him.
Yeah, I think that would be, we did it for Carrie, so...
Yeah.
Are you guys look care with that?
Yeah, no.
You can tell him, you can either have it sent to him or you can have it, whatever you prefer.
You might prefer, yeah.
And I know what it was. Should we, are we allowed to start a draft document for the review that we need to give to said town administrator? So we'll do that.
I'm all ready to get rid of him, so I don't really care, so... This is a rough crowd, right?
I don't think it's a rough place.
Uncle is, you know, is the chairman of the board.
Yeah, oh, I have to, I have to, can I tell him that story? So I'm in the, there's three sub communities, I'm in the finance and revenue one. So, uh, we get into our little groups, and there's an older gentleman with glasses. And I noticed his name is John Robinson, but I don't put the two together.
Right.
So I put up my little tent tag that says who I am, and he speaks up and says, hey, you know my nephew, Andy!
No.
And I, I'm like, I still didn't put the two together, because he said my nephew, and. Who the hell is this guy? So he says, yeah, your town administrator is my nephew. I says, oh, let's, yeah. So then, we go around introducing, the guy sitting next to him is from Hoptiken.
Hoptiken.
Kinton, yes, I can't even say it. And he said, do you know anybody of mine? Oh, yes, I have, uh.
Jamie.
Yes. Who runs the, the Contacut Creamery. And, and they're all like, oh god, I hope he doesn't know anybody of mine. Because he gives us whole, he did a story about, Andy did a story about the guy who runs for the Creamery and everything. He was very colorful, he asked the most questions.
Oh, that's great. Was it the chairman event? I don't remember hearing about this.
He's, he's the chairman of the.
No, I mean, the, who is, the event you went through, through NHMA?
This is a legislative process, so.
How did I not know about that?
It was in the, it was in the bulletin, but what it is, is you go and you look at policies that they have, they, anybody can submit one.
I did it online last year, that's why I was confused, because I didn't know it was.